Okay, Ellie, could you do a roll call for us, please?
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marikas.
Here.
President Deasolka.
Here. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. If you'd like to speak to the board, we always like to hear from our community. You get three minutes. If you're here in person, please submit a card and give it to Eliana. If you're online, please fill out the Google Doc and we will call you accordingly if you need translation. We do have someone available to translate into Spanish. And you will be given additional time. If you'd like to speak on any items that are on the consent item, please let us know because we vote on all those at once. Please silence your electronic devices. The changes to the agenda, I would like to move from the consent item, item number nine point two, to action. Is there any other changes?
I was wondering if you want to move ten point one and ten point two to consent. That's the Mandarin immersion materials and the other item. Oh, the addendum to measure U application, I think.
We will add those to consent. Any additional changes? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And now on to oral communication. Ellie, do we have any cards this evening?
So our first speaker's card is Sue Jorgensen.
Is she online? Okay. So she needs to be promoted.
I'm, I'm here.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay. I've sent the school board members a, an email with our copy of the San Mateo County Office of Ed contract with our librarian. I just want everyone to see that. Alisa McAvoy, thank you very much for your response already. It's been five weeks since the board voted to close Kyle's position. We have yet to receive any communication with our group as to what the plan is. I understand that it's supposed to be communicated when it's been finalized. So we are eagerly waiting for that. I would just like to run down in the fifteen years since I've been here. I think it has an impact when you hear it out loud. But the people that have been in charge of the librarians and we've been under them. It started out with Ethan Anis, who was a district librarian. Next was Patricia McRae. I don't know if I said her name right. She was a district administrator. John Baker, district administrator. We went under Tina Nelson for a while. County librarian. When Wendy Kelly, district administrator. I don't know if it was one or two years, we were actually just under our site principles. We then went to a district librarian, Beth, and I've forgotten her last name. Next, we went to Marco and Donna. Donna Leaf, Marco was a district administrator. Donna was a district librarian. Next, we went to Donna and Kyle, district administrator, district librarian. And then we went to Kyle and Tina Nelson, Kyle being district admin and Tina being the county librarian. I would just like you to try to visualize what it's been like having all those different administrators in addition to being at our own sites with the rules and protocols of what goes on at those sites. Each one of the people that I've just mentioned have had their own idea of how a school library should function. Some of those people have had a library experience, some have had none. We've had to change policies and procedures with each changing of the guard. This has not been a constructive work environment. And yet I must say that my colleagues and I have risen to continue to provide a really wonderful library program to the students of Redwood City. And it is only because this group right now is incredibly passionate about what we do. We want to stay passionate and engaged, but it's really hard with the constant changing. I would like to ask for your support for us at this time in providing some continuity. I've strongly recommended a district librarian position of somebody who knows libraries so that we can go forward and meet the challenges ahead. And thank you again for listening to me.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Ellie, do we have any additional ones?
That's the end of our speakers' cards under oral communication.
Moving right along to the bond program consent items. Can I have a motion to move that item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. There are no bond program action items, so we are on to discussion items. Item eight point one, first reading and discussion of board policy thirty five sixteen, emergency and disaster preparedness plan.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your attention this evening because we have seven board policies that are being brought to you. I sent these a couple of weeks in advance. I so appreciate the time you took to read them and I fielded questions here and there. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you might have about any of the policies, but certainly the one before us now. As you know, the bond, the bond, the Board Policy Committee meets monthly. And we review policies and administrative regulations that pertain, of course, to the ones at hand. We receive updates from CSBA and then we discuss them, meet with directors, attorneys, and so forth in the meantime. So I wanted to know if you had any questions regarding this, this first one on emergencies and disaster preparedness plan?
Any questions or comments on this one? No? Okay. So moving on to eight point two, first reading and discussion of board policy forty thirty, non-discrimination in employment.
Any additional questions regarding this policy?
No?
I, I just, I saw that there are a couple ARs that were mentioned that need to get in there. I think you said, you replied back saying that, yes, they're coming, right?
Yes, yes, the ARs require a large cabinet to roll up their sleeves and just dot every i, so that's still in the works. There may be some changes that, that are reflected soon.
On to eight point three, first reading and discussion of board policy forty one eighteen dismissal, suspension, discipline, disciplinary action, certificated employees. Many comments or questions on this either? No? Moving right along to eight point four, first reading and discussion of board policy forty two eighteen. Dismissal, suspension, suspension, disciplinary action of classified employees. Any comments or questions? I, I must say, I have to thank Alisa and Janet for attending these meetings. As you can see, you've done a great job because we don't have questions.
Yeah, you're welcome. In fact, Janet and I are kind of looking at each other like, yeah, we, Wendy, Janet and I spend a lot of time on these before you see them. So not to say that, you know, there's plenty of things we could miss, so that's why we put them out to the public. We want everybody's input, but thank you, Maria, for saying that. We appreciate that.
Okay, eight point five, first reading and discussion of board policy forty one nineteen point one one two forty two nineteen point one one and forty three nineteen point one one, sexual harassment.
I do would like to point out on this particular policy and those that are listed that there's a lot of work being done. You know, on a federal level, on a state level regarding Title IX and sexual harassment. So these are updated quite often. So it might seem familiar to you, but this is another update. And, and there may very well be more coming, including the one we'll speak about next.
Eight point six, first reading and discussion of board policy number fifty one forty five point seven, sexual harassment.
I did want to point out, I had a great question from Mike earlier regarding the posters that are outlined in the ARs regarding student to student sexual harassment. And they will be needed, needed to be posted in very public places, classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, cafeterias, et cetera. So we're just finalizing that. Everyone have many eyes on that poster. It's important information, but I also want it to be child friendly so that kids can read it, understand the visuals, and of course, follow through with seeking an adult. So there will be conversations to be had with the principals about how to communicate that properly. And then, of course, all of this information is always sent out in the first aid packet to parents.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That, that was one thing that kind of jumped out and that I'd definitely be interested in seeing what that looks like. Since that's, is going to be there for all the students to be able to see, unlike all the other notices about posting the policies in places where the staff can see them. This is one that is really for the student population, so thank you.
Thank you. It's a good question.
Eight point seven, first reading and discussion of board policy bylaws ninety three twenty, meeting and notices.
I mean, the only question I had was that it, these are just capturing what we're doing, right? Like, I wanted to just clarify because there were some things in there about capturing, you know, doing comments in real time. And Wendy, you, you explained this in email, so I already know the answer, but just wanted to, you know, make sure that it wasn't changing how we're already doing our hybrid meetings.
You know, it was interesting with this pandemic, it launched us forward in a few areas, this being one of them. So teleconferencing in general when it comes to board meetings. But then the resolution that the board is passing each month about postings and so forth for teleconferencing to allow for that to occur. So Cecilia and I had a great conversation this evening about that. Because, you know, it, it's a sort of a game changer from being in person only to teleconferencing. And with the governor's allowances of waivers and so forth down the line that might lead us to, you know, needing to make some changes if there's board members traveling and so forth. And the resolution is not in place, this board policy will help with those action steps for posting the agenda and then participation.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we had already started to, to enact some of these things. But then CSBA was sort of updating the policy to help all districts. Because I think districts are sort of on a range of what they're doing. But I think in the pandemic, you're right, it really opened up sort of new ways of thinking and how to engage the public, which is great. I mean, we have more people attending our meetings virtually than we ever had, unless it was a really big item, right? On a regular basis, so clearly, yeah. But you're right, we're just, I think we're already doing everything.
Okay. Well, thank you, Wendy, for all that good work.
You're welcome.
Minimum questions? That means you guys did an amazing job and again, thank you.
And you know, we should thank Jerry publicly as well. Because she does a lot of the work behind the scenes to get these ready for us, so we appreciate her. Please let her know.
Big kudos to her, yes, definitely. Thank you.
Agreed. Okay, can I have a motion to move the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to action item number nine point two, recommendation regarding extension of the agreement for food services management between Sedexo America LLC and the Redwood City School District for fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three.
So good evening, everyone. And before we move forward with talking about this contract, we do have a speaker's card. I'd like that speaker to speak first before I read a statement, which I've shared with all of you previously, but I'd like to read it to the public. So I believe Jessica Shade is on here for that.
Everyone. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to comment today. First, I just want to express how very grateful I am to the district, the superintendent and the board of trustees for being willing to work with parents to improve school meals in Redwood City. You've shown true commitment to engaging with the community. And I feel really lucky to be a part of the district that is so responsive and willing to include parents in their process. I know today you're going to be discussing an extension of the Sedexo contract. And I want to share requests that you update the contract to include language from the new Redwood City School District Wellness Policy. And that you make sure to uphold items in the contract that don't have current visibility. And the Redwood City Wellness Committee has done some fantastic work to update the Redwood City School District Wellness Policy. I really applaud them for all their diligence and effort. And including that language from those policy updates into the Sedexo contract will ensure continuity between district policy and implementation on the food service end, specifically including the points in the wellness policy about incorporating local or regional foods in the school meal program, making sliced or cut fruit available daily, bundling vegetable options into every grab and go meal that's available to students and conducting student surveys and taste test opportunities and using them to inform menu development and dining space decor. I know that the Redwood City School District Childhood Nutrition Services Department has been engaging on all these topics and incorporating them into the contract would help bring together the work of the Wellness Committee, the CNS Department, and highlight the importance of wellness to parents through transparency and consistency. I'd also like to request additional visibility or reinstatement of some of the obligations listed in the Sedexo contract that either haven't been communicated to parents or that may have been a part of the district prior to COVID but haven't been reinstated since. So for example, the contract states that Redwood City School District will establish and maintain an advisory board composed of parents, teachers, and students to assist with menu planning. And I've been really thankful to be allowed to sit on the Childhood Nutrition Services Committee with district staff and board members. But I'm not aware of an advisory board or how parents, teachers, and students could request to be added to that board. And the contract also notes that Sedexo is required to seek student and parent input on successful menu variation and planning. But the process for how to do that isn't transparent or easy to engage with. And Sedexo is also required to recommend or establish a formal structure to routinely and continuously gather input from students, staff, and parents about food services. But if that formal structure is in place, it hasn't been communicated to parents, students, or teachers. So in summary, before you renew the Sedexo contract, let's include some of the priorities that the district has voiced as being critically important to try.
Jessica, your three minutes were up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, so I'd like to read the statement and also thank parents who sent us emails. I think as last count, I had nine. I don't know if you had more than nine, but there was a last one that came in last minute, right before the board meeting. So to begin with, I want to thank you all for taking time to express your thoughts about the Sedexo contract. The ideas you brought forward and suggested to include in contract are important. However, I believe the document we should be reviewing for the analysis and the consideration is the board policy and administrative regulations for food service and child nutrition rather than the Sedexo contract. The Sedexo, the Sedexo contract is beneficial to the district by ensuring all federal guidelines are met via the code of the Federal Regulations Part Ten Child Nutrition Program, participation in the National School Lunch and Commodity School Programs. It specifies the program responsibilities of the state and local officials in the areas of program administration, preparation, and service of nutritious lunches, and the sale of competitive foods, payment of funds, use of program funds, program monitoring, and reporting and record keeping requirements as noted in the Sedexo contract. There are a lot of behind the scenes elements that occur in a school lunch program that Sedexo, Sedexo assists the district with on a daily basis. The choice for food and possible addition budgets, the choice for food and possible addition, additional budgets needed to fulfill board goals are decided by the board. So if we're going to do anything differently in recommendations of different types of foods that we would like to have our children experience, then it would be my recommendation to move forward with those types of foods if you so wish that to occur. And then to look in the budget to see what that would cost additional and beyond. The district already has many of your suggestions in place, so perhaps we need to work on our communication. For example, we do have differing food choices, fresh fruit, but perhaps we need to communicate this better. We do conduct surveys. In fact, I hope everyone filled out the parent survey and student survey that was sent out last week. We have received over nine hundred parent responses and over three hundred student responses so far. I can't wait to roll up our sleeves and analyze this data at our next meeting. I do appreciate, I do appreciate that we have Jessica Shade as a parent representative who attends the ongoing monthly meetings for child nutrition. She is the best person to bring forward parent ideas so we can discuss and determine the next steps. Jessica has already contributed research on other districts similar to R C S D to our subcommittee earlier this month and has been an active participant of the monthly child nutrition committee. Tomorrow in the afternoon, in the late afternoon, is our next monthly child nutrition. I know we have a couple of board members that do sit on that, that, that committee. Meeting with the subcommittee and they will be, I'm sorry, and they will be reviewing their work, research, and plans, which will begin to form a three-year plan, which will be discussed at this meeting tomorrow. The May Child Nutrition Meeting will outline our next steps in specific detail. The ideas that were brought forth by parents who are working with Jessica Shade are good and we are happy to review them and include them along with the survey data from parents and students that ended this week at the monthly child nutrition meetings. In summary, the ideas contributed this week by parents are important for seeing the Child Nutrition Committee to review. And we will bring these forward tomorrow and discuss further in May. But I do believe that the suggestions to incorporate ideas into the Sedexo contract is misplaced. I want to take that a little further. I met with our attorney late this afternoon and talked to her about this. She was very hesitant about moving into the contract, especially our board policies. She says, those board policies are the reg, board policies and regulations that the board must follow and that you must make me and my staff responsible to carry, responsible to carry them out. She was going to check with other legal counsel about it, but her recommendation was to make sure that those policies from the Wellness Committee are not incorporated into the contract. So that's where I stand with that right now until I get further notice from her while she's researching it. It is our obligation, if there is, if there are items in the contract, that I should be reviewing those items in which it indicates what we should be doing on an ongoing basis. So we need to make sure, and not we, but I need to make sure that there is a timeline when these items are in the contract, such as the advisory board, such as seeking student and parent input on successful menu variation and planning. And also in gathering input from students, staff, and parents about food services. There has to be a timeline of when that's going to occur. It's in the contract, so I need to make sure there's a timeline. I need to make sure that it's followed. I need to make sure that it's done. So with that being said, I think we, I, I believe we need to move forward with the contract. It's only for one year. I think we, I believe we need to move forward with the contract. It's only for one year, understanding that there are some things that we really need to adhere to that are in the contract. The piece that I'm a bit, as I stated previously, ambivalent about is putting any of our policy language into the contract as our attorney is reviewing, but at this point in time is saying to hold off.
Yeah, I would just add that as we've seen just tonight, our board policies changed. So I think that would be an issue with the contract because the contract, you have binding language, and if you have things that are changing within that, it gets a little bit weird. So I agree with you on that particular element.
And as I said, you know, all these nine parents that wrote, that's including Jessica, that wrote us emails, the comments are valid. They are things that we should be doing that maybe we're not. So I need to work very closely with the CNS Committee and also with Wendy, because I know Wendy is the district administrator on that committee, to make sure that we have a timeline on when these things are going to take place.
And I may, if I could follow up on that. I think when you read the contract, there is probably confusion between SEDEXO and the Child Nutrition Services. I think one has one letter more than the other. And when you're looking at them, it seems like it's all SEDEXO, but in reality, things like the slicing of the fruit, that is not up to SEDEXO, that's up to our staff. And we have explained that to Jessica as well, but it is confusing. So I think that's part of the confusion. The committee with parents, if you guys remember before the pandemic, we had principals, we had staff, we had parents, we had students. Now we need to go back and do that again. The suggestion to have local produce. Elisa, you remember way back then, we were doing it, and we have been doing it. So it's not like we're not doing it. Maybe as John said, we're just not communicating that. And to be honest, if you go to the supermarket nowadays, the produce don't look as good as they used to. It's taking a little longer for them to get here in some places. So I understand where these ideas that they brought for are coming from, but I think that we have been doing some of these. With regards to getting additional input, we used to have interns with the Wellness Committee that went to the different school sites, sat with the children, and reviewed the menus, talked to the children to see what they liked, what they didn't like. So I'm looking forward to, again, moving back to some of that. And Elisa, maybe you can take that back to your committee and see if we can have those. Right, so, do you guys?
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking on the Wellness Committee, we used to spend a lot more time talking about nutrition. So there is an opportunity there as well to sort of think about, you know, going back to Dr. Baker, what you talked about is this advisory group, which I do think is a good idea. I mean, we certainly want input from parents and students and all of that. And we did have more systems, I think, for that pre-COVID to make that happen. So we just need to think about what's the most efficient way for the district to sort of manage that, right? Whether it's in a separate committee or your committee or the Wellness Committee. But yeah, I agree with you, Maria, that we need to sort of bring that back. Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing that I think you, your committee might also work on is information to the parents that we can send home, because I keep hearing that we need to teach children about nutrition at school. And as you all know, every minute has been taken up with all kinds of requirements. So some of the other districts have these wonderful pre-made little flyers and worksheets or coloring pages that we can send home on Peachjar or we could even print them for parents to talk about nutrition and food with their children. The other thing that I would like to remind us of is that throughout the years when we talk about nutrition and obesity and those kinds of things, there are some children and people who have medical conditions that have them gain weight. They just can't help it. We have a lot of children with asthma when they take their inhalers. That impacts their weight. So we need to be conscious of that as we look at some of these policies, not to body shame some of these children, because in reality, they just can't help it. You know, there are also other children who don't want to eat certain foods. I know, for example, several mothers at Hoover who would bring their lunch to their children. It wasn't because they thought the food that we serve was no good, it's just that their child was picky and wanted to eat certain foods. So we also need to make sure that we don't discourage that if the family wants to do that. One of the emails we received talked about forcing people to eat certain foods. Just to be clear, we don't force anybody to eat anything. And again, as Dr. Baker has stated before, while some ideas like removing certain items from the menu are good for, and applauded by some people, other members of our community may not feel the same way, and we have to figure out what the balance is there as well.
I'll just add to what you're saying, Maria. You know, one of the other groups of students we need to consider too are neurodiverse students who have sensory issues, that they won't eat particular foods. And so we need to consider those students too when we're talking about feeding all students.
And students who have allergies, they do get provided with the special menus that they required. So I think that there's just a lot of regulations and things that we need to follow, and I think we're doing our best. But as I always say, there's always room for improvement, and I'm always looking to improve and do better. So I think that part of our issue has been this pandemic has really set us back. And as we start to move forward, I wish we could move a little faster, but unfortunately, you know, we can only do so much at the moment, but we are doing that.
All right, Dr. Baker, thank you for taking responsibility for the timeline, getting a timeline for seeing those pieces put together. That, that's awesome. I think that's something that, from the comments that we've heard, but also just because that, as you've said before, these are things that we want to be doing and putting in there. So I was glad to hear that in your comment. And I agree, I think we need to put this in the context of a longer-term plan. You scrambled quickly to be able to come and see what we could do with a contract change, but a contract change isn't something we do in a couple of days. That's something that we do with long-term deliberate planning. And I think that that, you know, hearing that the Child Nutrition, the CNS Committee is going to be looking at the three-year plan, how to incorporate these ideas, put that in there together. I think your suggestion that we should be looking at the policies, the ARs, and if needed, the budget to be able to fund these things is a much more durable direction and something that will outlast any contract that we set in place and will truly show the support that we have for it. There's been a lot of progress this year from not just getting back from, you know, pandemic operations, which really limited what we were able to do, and Maria touched on that a little bit, but also, you know, many of the experiments and pilot programs that are running to be able to change the way the food is. And I know we're talking about exciting things at Hoover for being able to offer, you know, in the future there. I also just wanted to say, you know, thank you to the parents that emailed all of us. It gave us a chance. This was originally, I mean, this is, normally, these contract extensions are just sort of perfunctory, regular business. But you really gave us the opportunity to take a few minutes and talk amongst ourselves here, which we might have actually passed on that opportunity. So I'm glad that we got those emails and that they got brought up and keeps us at the, you know, at the forefront of our mind, because, you know, happy, healthy students learn better, and food is a lot, is going to be a lot of a big piece of that. I forgot, so Maria and Cecilia, you're on the committee. Thank you so much for doing that. And Janet and Elisa, I know I just volunteered, you know, we've just volunteered those, everyone but me, to try and put that stuff together. So, yeah, it's real easy for me to sit here and say that that's exactly what we ought to do. So I appreciate my colleagues. Thanks.
Elisa, you had some comments?
Thanks. Yeah, so first of all, I want to say thank you to all the parents. I agree with Mike with what you just said. I think what's really good is I think it did sort of bring up again that, you know, this is a really important issue and something that we don't want to lose sight on, and we really do want to prioritize, and certainly appreciate the parents who are encouraging us to think about how we provide more healthy variety, healthy foods, varieties, scratch cooking, locally sourced, all of that. And I just, I think, you know, we do have a number of people in attendance tonight, and then those that wrote the messages. Just as a reminder, we did a very concerted big effort. I'm trying to think, Maria, I think it was like 10 or 12 years ago. And we did a big push. We added money into the budget, actually to make it happen. We did additional scratch cooking and more locally sourced foods and, you know, hand-cut up vegetables and fruits that were smaller portions, you know, smaller sizes. So the kids were more apt to take them, and they were a little easier for the little guys to eat particularly. So we did a lot of that, and I think we were sort of plugging along. And then frankly, we started to come up with some labor issues, right? And then they just exasperated during COVID, and we know what we were all just through. And so one of the things, I guess I just want to remind parents and all of us, is that we're still dealing with major labor shortages, which is actually really making it difficult for us to do some of the things we want to do, which are the scratch cooking, the, you know, the cutting things up so it's a little more accessible for the kids. You know, we used to have salad bars, and we were doing the A to Z bar, which was incredible. We did that more regularly at all the school sites. So I think, you know, we have some things that we've done in the past that were very successful and well-loved. Lots of ideas coming out from the parents in your group, Maria and Cecilia. And so I would like for, I mean, I would like for us to really think about, you know, how can we move forward with the resources we have, recognizing the labor shortages? I actually sent Dr. Baker another message today, and actually Wendy Kelly, our HR person, because we had talked about, do we need to increase the per-hour rate for our food service workers? And that's something you have to negotiate with CSCA. It's a more complicated thing. We can't just do that on the go. But, you know, we are competing with everybody else out there. And so I think there's some work that we need to do, you know, in that. There's a lot of different arenas, I guess, is what I want to say, is it's not, it's not just the contract. And I think, John, you did a good job of talking about, you know, the contract area. I did have one question, though. And it's interesting, I don't remember this coming up in the past when we've approved the contract, but when we have been, you know, asking for, you know, more variety. So like when we do the A to Z bar, the salad bar, or the locally sourced, or the organic, which can cost more, how does that work exactly? Because when you look at the contract, the contract with SEDEXO is that, you know, it's for a certain amount. So do we just sort of, it's a conversation, and we're, and that if it's more money, then we just need to put that in the budget? Or, I mean, how does that work exactly? That's the one question I had. Am I making sense?
Oh, we decided to incorporate more organic foods. Do you remember that time?
I do remember, yeah.
To have that conversation about the additional cost when we wanted a different type of cheese. We also had to have that conversation. And to their credit, SEDEXO has always been very responsive to what they want. So if we want to change the menus, then we have to also think about the cost. The other thing is that, if you remember in the past, we had less choices. It was a couple of things. Then students wanted more choices, and one of the choices they wanted, whether we like it or not, was pizza. Now they have pizza here, pizza there. When you ask them, "What did you have at lunch?" Pizza. It sounds like they have pizza every day, but again, it was one of those things that they wanted. If you recall, there were students from Selby Lane that came to the board and talked about their food as well. So we've had different conversations about that. And once we work on the three-year plan, then I think we'll be in a better position to figure out the cost, because, you know, there was also a time that we were concerned about the budget for this department. So we have to kind of balance it all out, although I would want to, you know.
Right. And then, you know, there's also some changes coming down from the state, right? About providing free meals for every child in California. And it's unclear how much they're actually going to be giving school districts to do that, right?
They have not, they have not indicated.
Oh, they haven't passed that yet?
It's passed, but there's not a dollar amount that's been touched with.
So anyway, there's a lot of moving parts here. With that said, I think the message out to the parents and the students is that we want input, we want to continue to work, we want to make things better, I think, right? I mean, I think you can't see, I mean, you can kind of see the big boardroom, but I think everybody is making eye contact and shaking their heads on that one. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, because I don't know if everybody was there for our discussion about moving forward with a bond potentially in November, and the schools and the parents and staff will be hearing more about this as we go out to have conversations, is there could be an opportunity in that bond to actually put forward a centralized kitchen that could help with scratch cooking. So again, you know, our facilities are actually kind of limited in what we can do with the smaller kitchens that are not fully, you know, prepared for the big-batch cooking and stuff. So, yeah, so anyway, that's great. So you're looking at the three-year plan, and so some of that will be incorporated. Like, what are the goals, and then what it might take to get there? Is that what?
There's that, and I know what I'm asking Wendy also for is to, as we move forward with, you know, what is in our, you know, wellness policy, you know, to look at that. Where does that fit in? And then also the items that are in the SEDEXO contract that we need to make sure that are happening. And what are the timelines that this is going to take? When is it going to take place? And then to make sure that I meet with Jorge and that the communication gets out to the parents that this is, this is what's happening, so that parents don't have a feeling that, you know, we're not doing anything in regard to what was placed in the contract. Plus, we also want to ensure our parents that we are listening. I often just think we're not listening, that we get the emails and we're just closing our eyes and our ears to what they're saying, because we do take it seriously. And that was the rationale for kind of pulling this off of consent, bringing it onto action, and then for allowing me to read the statement, and then letting me get ahold of our attorney this afternoon. When she got ahold, called her yesterday, but she was really busy and got back to me late this afternoon about the contract and language and so forth.
And I also want to say thank you to the parents, but most importantly, I feel the Child Nutrition Department, the entire department, I don't want to say one or two people, because I will forget a lot of them. They are the ones doing the work day in and day out with whatever they are able to get, again, with the labor shortage. And again, with our employees, you know, maybe there's less people calling in sick. We know that managers are coming in 5:30 in the morning, working on a schedule shifting from one school to another. So I do want to say kudos to all those people, because again, because of them, all the students do get fed. And maybe it's unfortunate that they're not getting the food that most parents would like, but we are able to do what we can with what we have right now. But I do appreciate the Child Nutrition Department being flexible and open-minded about being even willing to work with the parents to make things better, you know, doing the pilot program as we're doing right now. So I think it's just one day at a time. So again, thank you to everyone.
One other comment. You know, I totally agree with you, Cecilia. Thank you for bringing that up. I think, again, we were all commenting. But, and I just want to make sure, because Maria, you mentioned this, and I'm not sure if everybody, you know, if everybody understood this, is that, you know, in the past, and if everybody, you know, if everybody understood this is that, you know, in the past and even, you know, right now, Sodexus has always been willing to work with us. They've worked closely with us and they are willing to implement, you know, things that we come up with. So, and I think Dr. Baker, you also mentioned that. So I just think that's important to also give them credit is they actually have been a good partner to us over the years and really willing to make those changes that we've asked for. So part of it is we just need to figure out, how can we do that? Cause it's our, it's our staff that's doing the work and we're just having a hard time.
It's our staff.
We're having a hard time hire those, hiring those people. Um, anyway, so I just think that's important to say in this. Thank you, Maria, for letting me add that.
And I, I also want to thank the parents and the staff and the students for providing the feedback that we've uh, asked for. Um, as I said before, one of the options we may need to look at is having less choices uh, in order, I mean, I don't know if you guys, I, I would go and watch the children at lunch and watch them. Can't go in the kitchen because there's just all these regulations, but I know what it takes. And preparing more items takes more labor. Cutting up the fruit is more labor intensive. So some of those things, I know some of the parents said they haven't seen some of that. It may be because of, of the labor shortage and you know, you only have so much time to get them all through. Make sure they all get their um, items because there's a certain amount of fruit that they have to have. There's milk. There's all kinds of things and they're doing their best. So I'm very thankful that they show up every day, that they're there for our students. But again, there's always room for improvement. And as I said, Sodexo has always been very flexible and accommodating and helping us implement um, the things that we want to make changes in.
Yeah. And, and just one point, Maria, you, you hit something really, you're a nail on the head. I know some, there are the school districts that were recommended to the committee. Wendy and I went on the website and we noticed there's only, there are not choices. You get this meal, you either get, it's, it's a regular meal or the choice is a vegetarian. So it's, it's not choices like we have right now. So we need to look into that and um, and, and, and investigate that further.
Yeah, that is one of the things that if you want to, you know, not run out of some of those choices that student want, because that was the other issue. They all wanted that chicken, orange chicken or something at one school. Remember the orange chicken? Right. So uh, if we don't want to run out of orange chicken, then we are only going to have to offer orange chicken and the vegetarian meal. Those are the conversations I think we're going to have to have in the future and um, think about that. And then see if they still come and tell us they want more choices today. They won't want orange chicken. They'll want the burger or whatever, the burrito. We'll see. But again, I'm just very thankful to the staff and everyone, uh, especially during the pandemic. I know that during that time, Janet, you experienced it firsthand. The food was just not what we wanted, but it's what we got. And um, the other thing, I think that when you speak to parents uh, about food, one of the questions I have is are they talking about the food that's served in the cafeteria? Or the second harvest food that we get distributed at our schools? Because sometimes when you say the food at the schools, they don't seem to make that difference. So that would be something I would be interested in exploring more as well.
Maria, do you mind if I add just a few comments? I'm really excited actually about being a part of this committee. I just joined in late March, but um, there's a lot of energy and excitement around what can be. And Jessica has been invaluable. She gave us some amazing resources. She's affiliated with USDA. So it's been great to hear that from a parent perspective. We've had, we did discover, especially coming out of the pandemic, a few bumps along the road. For example, the CNS committee doesn't, uh, or department does a great job advertising three weeks out of meals, but could then get a shipment notification that something isn't in. So a child will go on one particular day and that item isn't there and get very disappointed and frustrated. And we thought, well, gosh, why are we doing that? Let's just produce one week, a solid week and advertise that. Of course, we plan out many weeks, but uh, and communicate that out on the website. And then people will feel better about it. So as small as something like that, that was an aha. Because over the last four weeks, we've been doing a lot of gathering of data. The surveys are going to be closing and that will give us a lot of insight about what our community is looking for and allow us to come back and look at systems and so forth. That have been maybe even a little rusty since the pandemic. We had to go to, you recall the um, pickup service and so forth. And that's a whole different way of deploying food. So we're coming back to that. To your point, August 27th, Elisa, we are bringing a reclass for our food service. So we're moving it from grade 18 to grade 20. That was negotiated. Uh, and hopefully will be signed, sealed and delivered by the board. And so that's coming on the 27th. So that will, I think, help with our advertising of positions. But thank you, Cecilia, for recognizing child nutrition. They are a hardworking, positive group and really roll up sleeves and pitch in. And just if you think of their evolution over the last three years, you know, scratch cooking, semi-scratch, deploying some frozen food, standing outside in the pandemic, working with families, then back in the kitchens again. So they've really been troopers. So I'm excited about what the committee is, is uh, going to be communicating and eventually coming to the board for, of course, with a three year plan. But it really, when you're looking at systems, it really requires an overview of what's happening. And that's the work we're doing right now. So, thank you.
Yeah. The other thing I would say Wendy is um, with regards to training, uh, with the turnover, we need to again, um, try and go back to uh, some of those refresh courses that they used to offer every year to um, our staff. And you know, we're all human. We forget some things. And there are sometimes, you know, we may not be at our best, but I know that they try. And I, I know that they do take it to heart and listen and maybe um, just add the training to some of our timelines as well during our three year plan.
Actually, I, I think you're right, Maria. The training is very important. Patricia Korean, Anna Lugu from Sodexo does an excellent job. And I know this firsthand because we'll all of a sudden have a substitute. And we'll say, oh my goodness, we have to train this person first. And they say, don't worry, we have a plan. We are going to bring them in right away. And then of course, there are ongoing trainings with the current staff and that's built into the schedule uh, and the serve safe certification, of course. But yes, that is definitely a highlight. We'll make sure we include.
Any additional comments or questions? If not, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On to 10.3 recommendation regarding approval of personnel changes for 2021 to 22.
Thank you. I, I know this might seem unprecedented to come at this time of year, but uh, there are two positions here that are important as we progress through till the end of the year. Uh, the California State Preschool is noted here. It has a description in regards to needing a floater for breaks and so forth. But the testing specialist, I don't know if you're fully aware, but the number of newcomers has about doubled over the last few years. And, and plus with students entering the district at different times and so forth. So it's created a little bit of a bottleneck that we're anticipating will continue and other testing requirements and so forth. So that's why this is coming to at this point in time.
Any comments or questions? Not, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. 10.4 recommendation regarding adoption of resolution 31, authorizing electronic meeting of the Board of Trustees during the state of emergency pursuant to government code section 54953E.
You know, we do this every month now. I, I think we have it until 2025, if I'm not mistaken. 2024, 2025, if I'm not mistaken. Just in case, just in case the governor made it that long. So uh, this will allow you also to, if you have to be away from a meeting, don't worry about it. You can still attend virtually. You don't have to worry about putting an agenda outside your, your door of your hotel or your door at home if you're sick. So uh, it gives us that flexibility. So I'm glad that it, it should remain, I think, you know, you know, but there, there is a timeline on it. And I can't remember if it's the end of 24 or the end of 25, something like that.
Yeah, maybe, Elisa, you can uh, talk to CSBA because I. Right. No, I just think it's been very valuable, especially like, um, you know, I value what you have to say. And when you haven't been here, I think it's been very valuable to have you uh, in the meeting. So I think you should lobby to make it permanent. Right. Okay. Can I have a motion to move that item?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Moving on to board and superintendent reports. Janet, let's start with you.
Okay. Um, let's see. I attended a couple of North Star Forward Committee meetings. Um, I attended the Chamber Education Committee meeting. Um, and John, it sounds like they're going to be um, moving back in person in May. I'm not sure if they're doing hybrid. Um, they said, we'll see you down here. Um, so just a heads up to you. Um, let's see, I attended the um, MTSS District Leadership Team Meeting. We had a workforce housing committee meeting, Elisa and Dr. Baker and I. And then um, Dr. Baker and Wendy Kelly and I had an RCTA climate committee meeting this week.
Actually, we don't have anything to report. I couldn't make it to the MTSS meeting uh, last week. So I, I looked at the slides, but 105 minutes of it was off slides. So I'll have to get an update from my uh, committee. Well, the agenda was very detailed on like how the time was set up.
There was a lot of breakout time. Yeah.
Cecilia?
Um, I only have to report the um, attending the North Star Forward Committee as well with Janet. And just my comment is um, I feel it's a good thing that we bring all these people together, teachers, administrators and um, community members, because everybody has different ideas. And so that, you know, would give us feedback. Cause it's not just me as a parent or as a board member. So I do appreciate what everyone has done. We do break our rooms and again, everybody comes up with some really good clever ideas that would then benefit the school community.
And I'm really looking forward to, I think it's next week, right? Our meeting next week is when um, all those ideas will come to the board. I'm interested to hear full conversation with everybody here.
In our meeting, we have two board members and you two board members have the ideas. You and I will get to talk about it tomorrow. And then there'll be a, an email.
I'm looking forward to it. So.
It's a lot of meetings.
Can't be more than the policies. Elisa?
Yeah. So let's see, I had a CSBA board meeting in Sacramento and we focused on the strategic plan and updates and probably the biggest, well, we spent a lot of time in strategic planning. And so more will come out on that. But we spent a lot of time talking about the National School Boards Association. And I think all of you got a note as board members, part of the association, that we're not going to be renewing that our membership with them. And if you have any questions, you could always ask me, but um, that was a very long conversation. And at the end of the day, we just um, determined that they were not serving the needs of the state of California. So with that said, we're doing our first legislative um, action, you know, coast to coast. That's the end of the month. I'll be going along with, I, I saw that Joe Ross and Beth um, Polito, who's a, who's a superintendent out of Las Lamedas, the three of us are going from the county. And so I think CSBA will be doing more annual legislative action with board members and superintendents going together. Um, so we have 160 of us going at the end of the month. And um, I'm going to send out an email to all of you if you have any, you know, ideas you want me to bring back to them. But basically the big topics are going to be special education. And I've got a lot of good information from um, our special ed department that I can bring back. And then nutrition, which we just were talking about. So that's great. I have lots of ideas for them there. Um, how they could increase the money for us so we could actually do some of the things we're talking about. And then the other one is broadband, which I know we're always interested in. So, um, and we're meeting with a lot of different nonprofits and different advocacy groups and stuff like that. So I'll report back and let you know how that's going to be. Um, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then I did attend the uh, parent education, you know, the series that, boy, they have a lot of them. But I attended the one on eating disorders and um, it was very interesting. And I don't know what our numbers are in our own school district, but I would imagine that we, you know, it's increasing everywhere. So the speaker gave some good suggestions to parents on things they can do to help their kids and all of that. Um, I think those are recorded. So if you wanted to watch it, you could kind of zip through it. And then, oh, and then Sam Taylor County School Boards Association and CSBA, our legislative advocate. We're continuing to meet with state legislators and there'll be some information coming out and opportunities for the, all of you to join in on that if you'd like. And then of course, we have the meeting April 18th, but that's a off day for this district. So many of you may have plans already, but I'll go and report back. And that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. All I have is I attended Familias and Needes virtually. And it was really nice to hear the students talk about testing. They were reporting, uh, one reported he got a hundred percent on his verbal uh, test. I think they're talking about the LPAC. And the other one said, oh, I got 75% on something and I'm waiting to hear the rest. But to hear them talk about testing in an excited way was like something new, you know? It's not really, oh, testing's coming and I have this and these children were excited. So whatever Familias and Needes is doing in this area seems to be working. The parents are also um, very excited and happy to have that connection and to be able to help their children, especially during this uh, last couple of years. That's all I have, John.
Okay. So I just wanted to remind you tomorrow at nine 15 at MIT is Mariachi uh, performance. So I'm looking forward to that. Nine 15. No, it's in the auditorium, right? Yeah. Liz?
All are invited to the Mariachi Festival tomorrow. It'll be at MIT. We've had a couple of schools have some kids who participated in learning how to play Mariachi music. And um, it's not a huge group, but they are um, mighty and, and strong. And they'll be playing tomorrow, starting at about nine 15 in McKinley Auditorium. And then um, we have hired a Mariachi band to come and actually play for them. And that will happen at, starting around probably nine 40, 45. And then they'll play together at about 10, 20, 10:30 or so. So please, please join us.
And may I just say how happy I am to hear that. I have waited 20 years or more to hear that they're going to be playing. Cause it's one of the requests I had from parents over and over. They wanted their children to have that. They have it in Santa Rosa. They have an international one. Why don't you have it? So thank you for all that and for making it happen.
So, so that's great. You know, everybody knows about that. Maria and I met with our finalist for the CBO, who is going to fill uh, large shoes as Priscilla retires later on this year. So um, I hope to have that contract coming before you on the last, what do you mean? on the last, what do you mean, of the month, the 27th. And hopefully that person will be here that evening. So you can meet them. Then, of course, North Star Forward, and we talked about that. I also had a debriefing because every time we meet, then we debrief the next day for a couple hours and determine, you know, what are we going to do next? And for us, it was putting all that together, which you, which all four of you have now, in which Eliana, I believe Jorge sent you the folder for the community now to get it. So the community will be getting it on Friday. Tomorrow, tomorrow. Thank, that's right, tomorrow. Please do. 6:15. It says 6:15. It's right. Yeah, 6:15. This is ready. So with North Star Forward. And then today, Liz, Michelle, Michelle Griffith and I took a little field trip over to Union City to the New Haven Unified School District. They have a family center for the whole school district. They have family liaisons at their school size, but there's this huge family center. And so what I will be talking to each of you about in, when we have our meetings, but also bringing a recommendation later on in the year is we are hoping to do something a bit similar. Not as grand yet, because we'll just be beginning, but to encapsulate the wonderful professionals that we have who are our mental health clinicians along with our community school coordinators, along with any other mental health specialists are that work with us here in Redwood City, along with our nurses, along with our psychologists and so forth. To have a center where we definitely dialogue and collaborate together, but also provide services to our parent and student community. So that's a vision that was brought forth by the group that we are working with at Stanford. And they have definitely supported us in doing all the research and what that looks like and where some of these centers now exist. This one across the bay exists now for 10 years. And then I know in speaking with Jorge, that Dr. Shashank Josi, who we work with, also set something similar up in Palo Alto, which we should probably go look at. So it's, it's to meet the needs of the community and to not only have everyone be aware of the services that we have for our students outside of the classroom and for maybe even for our parents, but to really have a sense of this is the Redwood City School District. These are the services we provide all families. Because if you're a community school, if you're not a community school, you have access to a community school, but you have to go somewhere to for it, right? We don't turn anyone away. So we want to have this center. And we're at the planning stage right now. And so most likely we're looking at a, at a school site where we could start it. And, and it's not going to cost us any dollars because we have this personnel already to do what we want to do. It's just that we need to look at the space and so forth. So I'm anxious to bring that to you in a future board, at a future board meeting before the end of the school year. But we went to see how they were operating. Well, like I say, it's been 10 years for them. So they've got this thing down. They have an enrollment center and everything, everything goes there. So if you if you are, if, did you?
No, I was just saying that I visited that and I'm trying to think why I was over there. I don't, it must have been through CSBA. I bet they were winning an award. That's probably what it was. It was probably the Golden Bell. I bet. Yeah. No, I was just realizing, I was like, this sounds so familiar. Okay, yeah, that was probably like four, I don't know, three or four years ago I was over there. Yeah, great.
Because they also have their enrollment center there. And so if a child, parent comes in with a child and say they need to have free reduced lunch, it's all done right there. Say they're homeless. It's all taken care of right there with McKinney Vanto. Say there is an child comes from another school district. There's an IEP. It's all handled right there. And you know, right away that's, and you start working with the child, looking at the IEP. If you need to do any differences because they're in a new district, you get it done right then and there. So it's really quite advantageous for parents coming into the school district and, and meeting the needs. The other pieces, I guess, they, because of COVID, it kind of turned them around and they were doing vaccination clinics. They were doing definitely more food, more clothing and all of that. But it's a really good system. So I was, I was quite impressed. I go, it'd be great to get there. I know we'll start small and then it will grow. But working with Stanford is a big plus. I mean, with that group that is a psych psychiatry department, the education department. I don't know what other departments are included. We, we have the psychiatrist that comes out one time per week. So we have the minute, the School of Medicine, School of Psychiatry. And then we have, of course, the Gardner Center that's with us. So the research is there for us. Alls we have to do is review it and then they break it down for us. So it's just really great. So if you saw it, you know what I'm talking about. Sure.
So it's been fantastic to work with the Gardner Center and with Stanford, who have all this experience and the vision to help us really think this through. And we really, if you remember with the, the board presentation a few weeks ago, that Stanford talked about the wellbeing of the students is depending also on the wellbeing of the staff. And so we thought that, that resonated with us a lot as it did with you and that. So how can we really set up a center that supports that wellbeing of the staff? And so we will be bringing together a group of people to, with Stanford to help us think of kind of, because it's not just a room with people. It's a room of people with a shared purpose and I'm working together as a team. And so helping us division, helping us develop kind of a vision for this work, what it might look like over the next couple of years. Because like John said, this is something that's just getting started. And so we would pull together maybe a couple of people from the board if they would like to be on it, as well as a couple of the administrators and a couple of the mental healthy, all the people that John mentioned in a planning team for this. And so that we would want to work on this and then bring it forward late May and June or something for to hear about.
One of the two. But I was really impressed. And I'm sure, Elisa, if you've seen it, it is just fantastic to have this center there and where being a new parent with a child coming into the district and everything is right there. And then you're sent to your school and they even, you know, do a kind of a meet and greet with the school and a nice handoff, you know, so I, I thought it was great.
That's great news. The next evolution of the family center. So I'm looking forward to it.
And then we had a superintendent's meeting yesterday and it was pretty short, but it's just that, you know, pen, you know, the, our cases are going up in the county, but hospitalizations are not. And it does look like the pandemic framework did get updated. So I'll bring those updates to you vis a vis one of our, on our meetings and give you, Shannon did a great job of analyzing the differences. And so we are getting to a point where, you know, it's going to be okay if you have if you've tested for COVID, you have no symptoms. Did I hear correctly? You come back and you wear a mask. Is that, that's what, that's what I read. So it's changing. And then the other thing that was discussed is that most likely it is going to the mask wearing will still continue to be strongly recommended. They're hoping to, to continue it at least definitely through, through this month and most of next month. They were trying to kind of maybe right before school, a few weeks before schools, a couple of weeks before school, school ends, maybe take not strongly recommend, but recommend so that when we start in the fall, the new school year, you won't be wearing one. That's what they hope. That's what they hope. That was the, the the big piece of conversation that we all had. And also about the ELOP, which Liz didn't want to hear about anymore, but that was a big conversation too. A lot of nitpicking about it, Liz, you know, why are we doing it? Why do you, but you know? So, but it was a good meeting. It was, it was, it was very good. That's it for me.
Information, there's nothing correspondence. We all received those nine letters from parents about the SEDEXO contract. And there was a couple of others on so on food and the child nutrition. Anyone's got anything?
Yeah, we also got a note, I think it was from today or yesterday from Sue Dorgensen. Yeah, about the library. So and we read all of it.
Okay. Any other business suggested items for future agendas?
I just wanted to say it would be great, John and Liz, to get an update on the family center because I was realizing, you know, you talked about some of it today, but it wasn't agendized. So it'd be nice for parents and others to hear about it. You know, when you're ready to present it, I do think it sounds really great. And I'm so glad you guys did that field trip today.
And any changes to the board agenda calendar?
Not yet. The only thing to, and, and to note is that on May 19th, that is a, what is it? A Thursday, we're going to have that retiree celebration for our retirees. And we just, I should not say we, we did all the work. She just booked Angelica's for us for that. So put that on your calendar. Is it on that afternoon? I didn't look at that.
I also have a hold on there, which we can move, but the Measure You Oversight Committee has a, I have a hold on my calendar for that side of it. Yeah, that one we can definitely move.
That one we can move. So on the, on the 19th, right? You can move that. Is there any way to move the induction one?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I figured that out. If you work with Nicole, that'd be great. Because I don't want to go try and find another date with the venue with Angelica's. That's, it's really difficult. That, that's like especially someplace that has like outdoors where we can be outdoors, you know. 46.
There's nothing else I would like to thank again, our technicians or I'm not sure of your titles, but thank you very much for being here this evening and helping us.
I call them the techies.
The techies, okay? Our tech department staff. Thanks for your help this evening. And I can have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.